Need a motion for the, to approve the present agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a public comment section. Anybody want to say anything? Are we public now?
For the record, we have three attendees remotely.
Do you have any hands up?
We have Jill, Lisa, and Pat. Lisa Engel. Pat Iliano, and Jill Chitman.
Don't see any hands on that, right? Board member comment? Board members have anything they'd like to discuss?
I do. Sal just said, Sal just said something tonight that was, I don't know if you think it was brilliant. Our administrators are, it's like they're underwater. And I just want to, you know, they have such a job ahead of them, ahead of them, and in back of them. And I would just like to make sure, I know they have Sal's support. I want to make sure they know they have our support. And I don't think, you know, I just don't want to put any more on their plates than they can handle. Just make sure that they know how much we appreciate what they've done this last three weeks. And just pass that on from the school board.
I'd ask our assistant principals who are here tonight to share that with their bosses. And them included, right? We're a very tight knit team, and we appreciate that. Thank you. It means a lot.
Yes.
You know.
You said it perfectly when you said they're like, they've been like underwater.
Yeah.
I think about it all the time. I think about it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
When we couldn't hear what was going on.
Well, I do want to, you know, it is board recognition night, so I'll get to that formal section. But you know, it's, having a supportive board makes all the difference in the world. You know, when the administrative team came to me, and then in turn I came to you with a little bit of an alternate approach to the beginning of the school year. Some districts may have balked at that, and we didn't know how it would turn out in the end. But we are, you know, we are where we are now, and I think we're stronger because the board supported a little bit less than a traditional approach, and it served us well. Perfect example, there was a little reluctance in terms of starting the year out remotely. We did it. Our teachers were very successful in that implementation. And what happens? We come to this week, and we needed to turn on a dime and go remotely? We were not unprepared for that. Where there are some other local districts who are struggling with that. So, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, but it's because the administrators were, were not reluctant in recommending something they believed in that would be in the best interest of the students. And then in turn, the board had our back, and because of that, we're stronger for it. So, thank you.
Other board comments? Well, I, you know, when, as Sal was talking about the struggles with the IP, I did reach out to Matt to kind of get a, another perspective on it. And he took some time, and I appreciate that. That was, that was a nice, better made me understand. I mean, Sal was very, with all his jargon that I didn't really understand. He probably filled me in the same way, but Matt was able to kind of bring it to me at a level I understood. It was still, it was good. Thank you.
Well, that was, I'm gonna tell you what, this is the Matt he was talking about.
This is the Matt Sal has been talking about.
The first email he sent.
Oh, no. No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Very own.
Yeah, no.
Our very own Matt.
Very own Matt.
You know, again, you're taking all my steam from my report, but, you know, when you have, when you have a resident security, IT security expert on staff, you know, you go to them.
Yep.
Until I got the second one, I figured out who it was.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to take this opportunity to, you know, describe the problem in a different way. So, if you have a fence around your cattle, and it's electrified, and you lose the electricity, I would imagine those coyotes can get in, and that's what happened. Our firewall, which was the equivalent of that electric fence, wasn't working, and.
All right.
There you go. How's that?
Unfortunately, I understand that very well.
There you go.
Except for, in my case, the neighbors usually call and lock those cows off their yard.
There we go.
So, all right, thanks. Does anybody else have any further items? Okay, we'll break along to building and department reports. Special ed, Brian.
I just need, I need a quick second to bring Brian's presentation up. And, what's that? And I have to apologize because. Oh, that's not gonna work. I'm sorry. Hang on. Fully.
How's everything going, Brian?
All right.
There was a little more hesitation.
A little tired.
You guys soldiered through the last couple of days, right?
Pardon?
You guys soldiered through the last couple of days?
We had four classrooms the last few days, over our special classes for the year.
Yeah.
Need to make sure you're really using that microphone. Okay.
All right, go to the next slide.
If I do it upside down, I will?
All right. So, I just wanted to, before we get into some of the other special education data typically provided to you, I just want to go into some of the pieces that COVID-19 had with impact special education. A lot of different guidance has come out from the state and federal level that we need to comply to on it. An area that they are very specific on is we must continue to provide appropriate public education. The services students have on their IP must be provided to the students. There are certain areas of flexibility, but certain that aren't. So, for example, for everyone with goals, we have to collect data on all the goals. We need to enter those datas into their progress monitoring and communicate any goal gains to the parents regularly, just as we usually would. It doesn't matter if the students are attending remotely or not, which does present some challenges. The special education teams have been meeting regularly on how to collect strong data when they are doing assessments remotely that were not designed to be given remotely. So, we're looking at other possible assessments to give the students, and how to do that, and how to measure data from a remote situation. There's also questions of, of forward attention that the child are getting when they're doing it remotely. So, that's been a piece. Another challenging piece is that students have to receive all their accommodations, modifications that they're, that are on the IP. So, things like, some of the, an example of some frequently, some frequent accommodations that students get are items like focus focusing and redirection for a child who's not attending, repeating and restating instructions is frequent. A lot of students might have something on the line of checking for understanding after a instruction is given. Through remotely, it's a little trickier. You have everyone going through those. Presents some challenge, though, so. Another piece is all evaluation timelines have to be met at the exact same schedule. There is no room for doing it. So, from the time we get a parental consent to do a evaluation for a child, we still have 30 calendar days to get that evaluation done, and 60 to get the, there are no. So, if we're out, we close for two weeks, or something we have to do, as some other districts have done. It doesn't matter. You still have 30 calendar days to get the evaluation done, and 60 have to be made. They're not giving any leeway for that. They do allow some flexibility in some areas when the accommodations and flexibility is being provided due to health and safety. So, examples of that are, say you have a co-tour classroom that's focusing on special education teacher, a general education teacher, and you want to split that. Usually you have the two teachers teaching together to create spacing. If you want to have to create two different classrooms out of that, and you have the special education teacher in one classroom and a general education in the other, that's an example of the flexibility that's being allowed. As long as all the special ed students go run over to dinner in the other. It still has to be mixed environment between the special ed students. Or if it's a special class, so say we want to spread out one of our special classrooms and two rooms for a while, you're allowed, what is the special education teacher supervising both rooms? Your TA can be teaching in one room, and the special ed teacher can be teaching the other. As long as it's not all day, the intermix between the two teachers. So, that's some of the areas of flexibility that are allowed to us. But it has to be at the accommodation of the switch that we made, do you help and safety. It's not just because the families need your force. That's not allowed. So, right now, we have 39 special education students, 23% have opted for fully remote learning. So, we do have some of that. We do have several special ed students who are, you know, almost a quarter of our special ed students are fully remote. So, there are some challenges like that. Brett and Kristen did a nice job at the elementary school by setting up one special education teacher to be with all the remote students, so we've been able to correct it at that grade level with everyone in. So, that worked out really well to address those needs. Those are the small, very small number handful of families that are opting not for remote. They're going to full homeschooling, so they're homeschooling. Typically, more homeschooling families who had their children in school because of their special education needs. You know, they made a homeschool of the other siblings, but those with student special education needs, they were sending the child in, of those families, oh, some of those families opted to homeschool. As you know, right from the beginning of the year, principals have done a great job of being able to work it out. So, every special education seat, every special education student has been able to come in five days a week full time.
So, they opted for homeschool, you mean? Not for remote, they're homeschooling.
Oh, really? So, they took them right out of?
Yeah, talking three or four families.
Yep. How do you, so you still have to follow?
Still, so we got a CSC meeting for all of those. So, homeschool students are still eligible to receive full special education services. There's something called an IESB, the Individual Education Service Plan. It's a little different than an IP, because a lot of the education the parents are responsible for. But for these students, they're mostly currently receiving, so you can continue to receive their related services. Speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, student getting counseling also. And we set that up to provide those services remotely.
Thank you.
That's fine. Yes, so they, you have to go back to a full committee meeting to switch them over to the IESB process. And also, it's interesting, even though we're able to get all special education students in K-12, five days a week, we do have a handful of families that opted for their students. They're not to attend five days a week. Not to attend five days a week. They still want, they still want them to do, for this, if they have a child who's grade seven to 12, they still want them to do the AP at home. Five families opted for that. What they're having to variety, a couple of different reasons, really. Some they wanted to be able to keep their child on the same schedule as their student. Other sibling who doesn't have a disability. And a couple of families were concerned that their child may stand out being every other day. Every day, they wanted that to be more important than those students does. Conversations I had with those families just prior to the school year when they reached out that they didn't want their child, we spoke about at the progress report point or the end of the quarter, to review the student's progress and to see if it's working. We already have a couple of those families who are looking to come back full time. If the student are struggling. Some of our students who have attention deficit hyperactivity disorder are really truly struggling. Attending to that screen for learning is not its process. There's several of them.
When you talk about children that opted out, are some of them like in learning paws?
Yeah. Yeah, some of them are doing different things with the families against.
That's what I was just trying to.
And they don't all communicate. Some of the families communicate at different levels of what they're choosing to do when they homeschool. At different levels.
And some of them are, but they're still getting some of the services.
Yes, so they're getting, everyone's still getting some services. All remotely, but everyone's still getting, it might just be speech and language a couple of times a week, but they're all still getting some services, still responsible for providing special education. Help me switch over. I'll give you. All right, so this is kind of a review of last year and what happened. We had 26 students last year referred to special education. 20 of them were between the grades of kindergarten and 12th grade, although, you know, they were school-like students, and six preschool students. 14 of those 26 were found eligible to get an IP. 10 of them with school age or preschoolers. Though we did have a few students who were found ineligible going into those meetings. We had 18 requested review meetings. A requested review meeting can be requested by a teacher, parents may, there's a concern with the IP. We might amend something to it, something that might need to be amended that called a bigger conversation. Or the students may not be making the progress we want them to be seeing, and there could be cable concerns, a lot of different things. Trigger one of the requested review meetings. So, then you see from the screen from all those little meetings that you look at. We had 131 annual review meetings, 49 triennial evaluation meetings. A triennial evaluation meeting is very similar to an annual review meeting, but every three years we're required to do full testing of every student with an IP to go back, make sure the classification is still accurate, if they're placed properly, if we're providing the right number of services. So, the school psychologists do them. We had eight preschool to CSC meetings in spring. Five of those students came into kindergarten with an IP. The ones that didn't, they met their goals coming out of preschool. They met, so coming out of preschool, special education services hit the mark for those students, and they were ready for kindergarten without any special education services. Some of them still may require some extra AIS, or maybe some speech improvement, but not to the level of needing an IP. We had 13 transfer meetings, which means we had 13 students during the course of the school year move into district with an IP. We had to switch them from their district, from their former district IP to a Chadan IP. It's different on that than we have most years. Usually, we take in more kids than we leave. We actually had 14 students move out last year. So, we're down one in terms of kids coming and going. It is unusual. Usually, more come in than leave, but we had 14. We had some families with a few kids, and families do that, which kind of tipped it the other way. Eight manifestation determination meetings, but sometimes they have to happen. We had two last year. This is when a student with a disability gets in trouble to the point where they're looking at a suspension of greater than 10 days. So, students with disabilities have some additional rights. If, we have to determine at the CSC meeting if the child's behavior was a manifestation of their disability. If the behavior was a manifestation of the disability, they cannot be suspended greater than 10 days. Hope it forces the entire school to get a look at other plans. If it's not a manifestation of disability, if they did something that had no relation, then the principals and superintendent can, if it impacted disability, will impact the consequence. So, this was a big number, more than we usually have in these meetings. We had 67 amendments without a meeting. A lot of these happened in the spring after we closed to make some modifications. Typically, they happen when a teacher might be working with a child and think that you need to add a test accommodation. They might need to have a test spread, or they think, you know, we're only going to be moving really slow. We give them time and a quarter for testing, maybe any time and a half. They reach out to the parents, and the parents in agreement, you send home the paperwork, the parents sign, and we change the idea. Those are little things. We don't necessarily need to come to a full committee on that. Everyone's on board. We'll make those changes. We get a little more than usual.
Were those changes accepted?
All of them.
Good.
You know, and they start with a conversation between, it's the communication between the teacher and the parents. That's how that begins. So, they'll talk, and they'll say, you know, the child is struggling with this. I want to add this support. So, it might be a child with autism, say, and the teacher's really thinking, you know, program supports, I want to add a use of a daily schedule. You know? That type of thing might get added without.
If there's anything more significant, you could go back to committee.
We can always go back to committee. And those, you know, those 18 requested review meetings, those were more significant, kind of like. Sometimes a teacher will reach out to me and say, I think I want to make this change with the IP. I'm on board with the parents who are working, look at the amendment. And I'll be like, yeah, we gotta go to committee. And that's worth a bigger discussion, you know? You know, and it might still happen, but you know, there's, if we're looking at, say, changing programs, say if we're looking at changing the number of minutes of resource, or if we're looking at a co-tour teacher, not a direct consultant teacher time, I'll always go to a committee. That's too big of a change. All right, so.
As I say, I find it striking that almost half of the students who are referring for eligibility, eligibility consideration were found to be ineligible.
That's a unique piece. So, what happened last year on that? So, we have the response to intervention requirement, which means we need to be collecting data and doing interventions prior to going to committee. That's one of the regulations that we must follow. So, what happened in the spring is parents in, through the packets, were seeing their students struggle. I didn't know they had a hard time with that. Now, I'm seeing them struggle. So, we had many more referrals from parents than referrals from child study teams. So, some of those, we had no response to intervention data on. So, we met, it was still very productive meetings. Some of those meetings turned into, what's the plan to collect some data? What are the interventions we're gonna provide? And it came out, and some of them might come back to committee once we have some more data. But we had no evidence at several of those meetings that there was any intervention. And some of it, the school, you know, the elements of the school did not even think they needed AIS services. They were not getting any support. Like in school, they felt that it would be fun, but they still got referrals. And a parent can make a request to the committee on special education anytime they feel like it. They haven't had that. But sometimes that creates a little bit of a hurdle if the building has not been collecting any intervention data. If the child has not been getting free referral interventions, which is something we have to do.
I'm curious, there's, what is the number on that?
26, if I remember correctly. 14 of 26 were.
We've got a dozen children, as many families-ish?
Yep.
Yep. Do we have a feeling on how, are they feeling taken care of at this point?
I haven't gotten any complaints. So, I would hope so. A couple of those, I had to check the numbers on you. A couple of those did end up with 504 accommodation plans that didn't qualify for IP. Didn't qualify for 504. That is a couple, so not all of the 12 didn't get any plan.
Yeah, and the spring is challenging for everyone, so that's just.
It certainly was a challenge. And then you look at the preschoolers, you know, the couple preschoolers who weren't identified. Sometimes the parent is checking, a little concerned about how my child's speech, their language developing. And then the speech and language therapist does the evaluation, like, yep, the child's having good development. And the parent's like, okay, thanks, I just wanted to check. So, those are a couple of ineligible schools, too. Okay, so we've been going down in numbers for classification rates, as our enrollment's also been going down over the past few years. Back in 2017, we had 225 students with IEPs, school age, and preschool. This year, we are down, starting with 173. So, we've dropped 52 kids with IEPs. Out of those 173, we currently have 163 of them are school-aged students, and 10 are preschoolers. We have a pretty steady decline on that. Some of it's just that our enrollment's also declining, so we're, so that's coinciding with our increasing enrollment in district that you see in those enrollment reports. But some of it's also the work of the child study teams and the school psychologists in the building, and the AIS teachers, collecting some data, and the students are making gains without them getting a child study. The AIS system, the tiered intervention systems are being effective. So, it's a mix. So, still the large, large majority of our students with disabilities are identified with learning disabilities. There's 13 different classifications a child, a student can have. So, if you look at that list, then you see the numbers don't show on that. But we're looking at students with learning disabilities, that's 74 students. Students with multiple disabilities, 27. Speech and language, nine. Now, it's interesting with speech and language, we have nine students that are identified as speech and language impairment. A lot of students who are identified under multiple disabilities, learning disabilities, autism, also intellectual disability, also receive speech services. It may not be their primary disability, but they're still getting speech. So, it's all like, you know, the speech therapists are much busier than, what do you think, the non-kids. So, they, they see a lot of other kids besides those. So, we have students with intellectual disabilities, there's currently five, emotional disturbance, we have six. We have 15 students with autism in district. Currently, we have no students who are traumatic brain injury, vision impaired, deaf or hard of hearing. We have some classifications that we don't currently have in district. A different pattern, too, than you may have seen in the past. Usually, MED has most students with disabilities. As our numbers have dropped, the bigger percentage are now in the high school. We have 60 students in the high school with IP, that's the biggest number. Middle school has 39, and MED has 51. So, we have, you know, we have a few. We are down in our numbers, outplaced students. We currently have 13 students who are outplaced. For a while, six, seven years ago, we were in the 22, 23 range. So, we've gone down quite a bit in that area. So, with the Questar programs, we currently have three. Private day schools, we have seven. Private residential, there's two. Four in pieces on the financial end of those private residential. Both of those are considered outplaced students, which means that we are only responsible for the educational. Your state picks up their residential fees.
Is this including, is this including those children that are being homeschooled?
No.
That, that doesn't show up?
Residential is students who needs could not be met at a Questar program or a private day school, day treat day school. They need 24/7 support. So, we have two of them in the residential. Friendly place private school, we only have one currently. Going to private schools that aren't district, so, and one of them, he is wanting to do with us. So, we have one student who the parents have placed there. We're also responsible for providing special education services if it's a friendly place private school. School is close enough to us that we bus that student back and forth daily for a 40-minute reading lesson. Here, at the middle school now. So, that student comes to the middle school 40 minutes daily for a reading lesson. So that student comes to the middle school 40 minutes daily for a reading lesson. So last year, we had 16 students who graduated, which was very nice, you know? It was nice to see so many kids' graduation, who have known since kindergarten. Some of them I tested, went down to the school psychologist, graduated. That was wonderful. This year, we're projecting, everything works well, we'll have 11 students with IEPs graduating from Chatham High. We have one Questar student will be aging out. It's a dis-sustained student, New York State Alternative Assessment, who already received that, took that assessment, got their Alternative Assessment certification, both skilled and achievements, SAC credential. That student's turned 21 this school year. We have two privately placed students, also dis-sustained students, gained their skilled and achievement credential. They're aging out this year, too. So we have three of our higher course students who are aging out this year, and we have one student possibly returning to district. The school psychologist recently went and met with the student, met with the private school teacher, did assessments, and came back and he said, I think the child's ready to return. So we're gonna start making some transition plans in the spring. The child spends a little time here, we can get to school, so that child might have a reduction of four outplaced students.
What was the private school placement here? Which school?
Pardon?
Which school was that?
Uh, Co-Grass. It might be a possibility of return. But you don't know. It's early in the year. You don't know if this student's gonna be teaching and do well, but preliminary conversations, you don't know if it's possible. Okay, what questions you have for me?
The, one thing that I, I saw here that is sad is that 39 special ed students have opted for fully remote learning. How the heck did you ever get that going?
Teachers, teachers have worked so hard, they've, they've helped with the assistant principal and the principal.
It's a heavy lift.
It is a heavy lift, but they are pulling through. It's impressive. You know, you talked about, you know, the administration being underwater. Sometimes the teachers are, you know, it's, they're working really hard, but it's going well for the majority of those students. There are some, those 39 kids who are struggling. And I've reached out to some of those families that had some conversations, more in-depth conversations about, why are you remote? Like your child's clearly, you know, is, is there a possibility of coming back? And a couple are true that could come back. But a couple of them are, you know, they have, they might be a grandparent, health issues living in the house, kind of thing, and it's just not worth the risk. They, they agree the child would be better coming in, but when they look at their family situation, it's just not worth it.
Same ratio as the general population, so no, no surprise there, really.
Yeah.
The teachers are doing a wonderful job, but they really are, I mean, they're really thinking outside the box, coming with creative ways to teach the kids. They're collaborating constantly, bouncing ideas off each other or from me, and it's a work in progress. Can't say it's 100% perfect where we want it, but it's gone quite well, considering.
I, I'm curious of the non-structural service delivery. We're doing 100% remote? Because I know before COVID, some of that happened in, in schools, eh?
For, not.
For, for example, occupational. That's all happening remote? With every child?
For students who are remote, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Students who are remote, that's 100% remote, yeah. And they're doing well with it. You know, it's not the same thing, you got some supplies home. Physical therapy and occupational therapy are probably the trickiest. But you know, I had a conversation with one of our speech therapists the other day, who was working with a child who was just struggling with their R sound, just not coming, and that child is fully remote. And the speech therapist, like, I just want to use my tongue depressor and shake the mouth, and so there's certain things they just can't do.
Does anybody else have any questions that have to bring?
So I think, as I mentioned to you last year, you know, I want to put together what you guys wanted to hear, and see if I can get this together, but you know, next time I present a discernment specific, you want to hear about special education, let me know and I'll make sure I do it.
I think you did a wonderful job this time without any comments from, I mean, you've covered some important issues. It's like you, you know, following up on last year, I wouldn't even have thought to ask you to do that, so that was kind of neat. That's how we ended up, so.
Brian, we're, we're now in the third year of the self-contained at the high school, right?
Yes. And that's actually, you know, I should comment briefly on that. I was very, very, very nervous about that class this year because of the amount of time they spend out in the community. And they've been able to work it out, they're still going in the community on a regular basis. The kids are great at wearing their masks now, we give the little prompts in the beginning, but they're doing well, they're still going out to their different places, and one of the things that I've had to hand, but you know, they're, it worked out really well. The students worked very hard in the month of August figuring out how to get the kids out in the community, so keep that work. They're looking at other ways, same with the eighth grade, with Mrs. Dorson's classroom, the 60 way, some of the ways they made their money, the finance, you know, the Perky Panthers that you've been to. That did not sell, they can't sell food anymore. So the Perky Panthers did a raffle this year that went very well, three months. But it's tricky.
In all the self-contained classes, I'm aware of at least one language concepts student who was remote, but how does that, what's the breakdown at the middle school and high school? Do we have any full remote students from either of those two classes?
We have a middle school student who ended up being homeschooled.
Okay.
With the parents opting not to, just want to throw that. At the elementary level, Mr. Boxford has two.
Two.
Who are fully remote. Mrs., when they're started with remote kids, when they come back, so she's fully packed right now. Mrs. Dorson has all of her kids, and currently, Mrs. Rossi has two kids who are fully remote.
And, you know, if you recall from the opening plan that we put together, our self-contained special ed class came back right after the professional development day, so they've been with us, and they've been with us the last two days, and that was something, you know, a shout out to those teachers who felt it was important to have those students, even this week, in person with them, so. Thank you, thank you, Brian.
You know, I actually have one request for that, Sean. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at the students with disabilities by school chart. And we've got this, you know, we've got it sliced up by building. My first thought was, wow, I'd really love to see, you know, a drill down on the pre-K through two, because that's where all of our screenings and early end events are happening, right? Get this real good to do. But, but then I'm thinking, you know, we may as well just do this per grade, all the way up. You know, it's also hard to read this, because, you know, we've got different amounts of kids in each grade and different number of grades in each building, but being able to drill down further would be.
Well, I don't think we should wait. I think we should put together a chart for you.
I can, a very odd dynamic has happened, which I can't put my finger on, last year, is that we have a lot of fluctuation.
I know, it's long period.
Now, and it's, I don't know why that is. We have, we might have one grade with 21 or 22 kids with IEPs. The next grade down has four. Then we have a grade with 18, then we have a grade with five, then we have a grade with 10.
Right, and, and you have to be responsive, right? But the resourcing, that you need to do your job, has all these like ping pong ball bounce effects all over, the whole school's resourcing, right? As the kids move up through the school.
Yeah, and, and it's somewhat of a challenge, but, you know, to that point, just for point of recollection, if you recall, we had a pretty large cohort of special needs students in fifth grade. When they went to sixth grade, we added a special, a special educator, and that person has followed that cohort, and I believe that cohort's in seventh grade now, right?
You know, and then when, no, that cohort, yes, in seven, but when Mrs. West retired, that teacher was in the middle.
So we've had some good luck in terms of human resources, that things have fit, fit together.
And then teachers, you know, the idea that this is a special education teacher who works at this grade level that we kind of once had, that's had to go away. So if you are in a grade level with this five kids with IEPs, you're helping out at the grade level that has 20. So there's more shared responsibilities.
And I think, and I think I had this right, we also were somewhat fortunate in terms of, there's a, there's a demarcation in terms of certification, right? You've got a K6 special education certification, and then you have 7 through 12. And we were fortunate that our, when we hired the K6 educator, that's what she needed as far as certification, and she was in the process of obtaining her 712. By the time she needed it, she had it, and so the timing of that played out pretty nicely, too. So.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we're gonna go to superintendent's report.
Okay, let me move this back so I don't frighten those people at home. Okay. Well, first on the agenda, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but on behalf of the entire district, the administrative team, and all of our instructional and non-instructional staff, I, I really want to have a heartfelt thank you to the entire board, and thanking them for your dedicated service to this community. I just, I, I don't know if you would receive this as well, but NISBA put out a little fact sheet not too long ago, and there are 5,000, just over 5,000 of you across the state, serving in about 690 districts. The gender breakdown is about 50/50, male and female board members, and about 50/50 in terms of years of service. Five years or more, and, five years or less than six. An average board member, and I don't know if this is typical of your experience, spends about six hours a week on, on board business. So because of that news, I wanted to give you some even better news, and that is, we're gonna give you a 10% raise. And for those of you who may not be following the math, that's nothing. So, but we, but we will give you our praise and appreciation. In front of you is Sal's failed attempt at a board appreciation gift. It's my, my take on a COVID trick-or-treat basket. So if you're gonna go down Kinderhook Street this week, make sure you stop at Mike's house, first of all, the blue house on the right. But after you get done trick-or-treating that night, make sure you, you know, wash your hands really well, too. So just a small token of our appreciation for your dedicated service. I, I don't know if this is typical of your own personal experience, but many people going into this as a new board member, and we've got a couple joining us in a couple weeks, don't have, I think, a perspective as to the important role and the number of hours behind the scenes. Everybody sees a board meeting or a video of a board meeting and maybe sees you at some events, but they don't see all the late nights and weekends on the phone with Craig trying to figure out how to make sure that the students in this district are well served. So again, on behalf of everyone, thank you for what you do for this community and for our students. Let's see, before I go on to item number two, which is just to have a few brief comments about our teacher-mentor program, I, I wanted to just publicly update all of you on terms of some of the internet issues that we've had recently, but it kind of falls right into place with our board recognition. And again, you heard Craig mention it earlier, but just a shout out to my colleague here, Matt, who was just a tremendous resource last week in terms of sitting with Giles and I and helping us talk through some of our challenges in terms of our internet connectivity issues and the security ramifications around that. Tremendous resource, and hopefully it's equally as rewarding when you have a specific expertise and you can help your district move forward. And I can tell you that not only did we have that meeting, but afterwards, Matt took some time out of his busy schedule to put together some, a follow-up email and some resources that we could continue that process. And I know he's, he's also made himself available as we move through this issue, and, and I work with Lisa and, and Matt on making sure that the resiliency that we have in terms of IT is much greater than we have right now. So Matt, thank you, I really appreciate that. You know, everybody knows that my passion is technology, but one area that I never fully developed was internet security and IT security, and so it's good to have, Matt has our back on that, so thank you. And moving right along to, well, I will stay with that for a second. So we did have a hardware failure that resulted us having to close and go full remote the last two days. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we were really well-prepared based on our opening to do that. You know, I did explain to some parents who said, why do we have to go full remote if we have an in-person program? Well, when you have well over 25% of your students who've selected full remote, and then another 50% of your 7 through 12 graders who've selected remote, when you have a disruption of service like we did with the two problems that we experienced, you start to get concerned for the continuity of learning that's not occurring with those students. So we, we figured we had to take a step back. We knew if we sent people home for a couple of days, teachers could work from home and could meet, better meet the needs of our students over those days while we figured it out. So I think it's worked out fairly well. I know anytime, and I said this to a parent in an email, anytime that we close school, the administrators and I don't, do not do that arbitrarily, right? We know that although it may have been easier for us to have the students at home and teachers to have internet connectivity, we also know that's extremely disruptive to parents. Unexpected closures, whether they're snow-related or any, any purpose, disrupt a household schedule, and we do not in any way should perform, take that lightly. So I want, I want you as a board and the public to, to know that. We do, we are hopeful that we're getting on top of this problem, but I'm not totally convinced we're over it. We will continue to pursue solutions and better solutions so that we can better insulate ourselves from this problem in the future. And on to number two. The only comment I'm gonna make is that annually, the board, we, we have the board approve the teacher-mentor program. Teacher mentor is a requirement by the state that we, we mentor our new teachers. The mentor update, the plan update that you have is not, we, we made no substantive changes, a few dramatical and structural minor changes, but there's no changes from the plan that we've brought to you over the last couple of years. I will remind you that Judd Hoffman is our mentor coordinator. He took that over from Lucas several years ago, when Lucas transitioned into the AES position, so he's been doing a great job. I think that first year, it was a learning year, and Lucas mentored him, but now he's well on his way to, to heading up that program, and I, I thank Judd for his leadership in that area. And that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening. I'm gonna turn it back to Craig.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Sal? Well, thank you, Sal, for recognizing us board members, but it's not all that bad at all, boys. I think we have a pretty good group, I want to thank you, too. Moving along, board committee reports. Policy. Policy's been busy. Pat, what's been happening?
Okay, um, policy committee met yesterday morning, and we've been working on a couple of policies. We're really trying to catch up from last year, so we're kind of slightly behind, but big thanks to Rachel and Destin, they made a good effort at getting one of them, the policies that we've been looking at, ready to go. That's, it's supposed to be on.
Oh, close it.
Alice?
Yeah, it's on.
Can you, can you hear me now?
You just gotta speak right now a little.
I'm not used to, I'm used to. You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anyway, um, as I said, thanks to Rachel and Destin, they made a good effort at getting together, I mean, post-finalizing, updating policy on information, data, privacy, security, breach, and education. We managed to kind of consolidate a number of policies together to address the topic in one policy that hopefully will be ready to come for first reading next week. And we're also now looking at another, updating another policy, student records, and same thing, we're consolidating. And uh, we're also now looking at another, updating another policy, student records, and same thing, we're consolidating a few other policies into one. To be a little bit clearer and concise. So that's still in the works. We have some questions that are gonna be reported to the board. So it'll probably be another month before you see that at first reading. Uh, other than that, we've done some um, kind of housekeeping in terms of uh, coming up with some um, procedures as to how to address some ish, um, concerns as to how we operate as a policy. Um, one of our check, uh, assets of our charter is that we evaluate current practice of applies to the policies, which obviously, that would be a major undertaking if we try to do that as part of looking at policy. So we came up with uh, sort of a, um, a way, an approach that we're gonna take. Uh, Rachel's actually putting that together, so we will have that and hopefully to document for future and for plan four. That's where we are right now. Uh, we have a lot more to look at this year. Uh, and as we look at some of these policies, others come to mind that we need to take a look at, too. So uh, we're gonna be busy. Our next meeting is November nineteenth, so um, there should be more coming after that. That's about it.
Any questions or comments for that? All right, the only thing I got to say is keep working that Rachel. Hopefully she's uh, tuned in.
We've had a lot, lot of experience together for policies, so definitely using her.
Good. Um, old business. Uh, we're gonna brief uh, discussion on uh, some board vacancies. Uh, kind of went over it in executive session. But we have uh, two open positions and we have two letters of intent. Um, very happy with the candidates.
More in motion that we, uh, contact?
Sure, we can uh, well, no, uh, I think that um, you know, since we spoke about them and everything, I think we can just add them right to our agenda and forward. I don't, do we wanna take motion? To add it to our agenda?
Yes.
All right, so.
They're not looking to do that tonight. They're, they're not looking to accept them tonight.
Okay, Pat.
We're gonna accept.
Okay.
How about uh, somebody make a motion to accept the letters of intent? And to be added to our next agenda for possible approval of the board.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? You all agree? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
So Dev, just, just a matter of quick, so what they've, what they've done is um, they've reviewed the letters. They're gonna reach out to those two candidates, confirm interest, and then bring a resolution at the next meeting to appoint them. Are we correct in that we can um, appoint them and give them the oath on the same meeting? Right, okay, so that, that guy's gonna reach out and see their availability.
See if they can make the meeting and, I mean, either way, they'll be on the agenda and it'd just be the following meeting. Or in your office or something.
I would announce them.
Well, I'd like to thank uh, Ted Minor for stepping forward. Uh, he's been a uh, uh, community, great community member on policy and some other uses, uh, so I want to thank him and uh, relatively new fellow to the area, which uh, Christopher Spencer. So uh, looking forward to uh, those guys joining us and uh, I appreciate the, that they put in their uh, letter of intent. Questions or comments? Forward. Great. Moving forward, uh, new business. R twenty-seven, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the CCSD priorities twenty, 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 twenty-one. They get a motion? They get a second?
Second.
And questions or comments?
I just, I'd say, for the, for the record, um, just like, we kept the four overarching goals the same and, and most of the priorities. But based on recommendations from the board, we've added a priority under the wellness, the academic, and the safety goal, which is to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on wellness, academic programming, and security. So that, that's where we added a priority.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, we got a question.
Other than that modification, it's the same as I discussed in September?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Well, here's one we've been all waiting for. Uh, really happy to uh, have this agreed upon, and I want to thank everybody involved. R twenty-eight, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the agreement with the Chatham Central School Teachers Association for a collective bargaining agreement for the period of July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Authorizes superintendent to execute the agreement and approves the payment of money provided therein. Can I get a motion?
I will make that motion.
Any questions or comments? I know a couple.
I'd like to comment that this is um, uh, obviously long overdue, but I, I think I say that um, we're very glad we have come to the agreement here, and um, it's too bad we couldn't make this process go any faster, but looking forward to uh, next round being easier, I think, in, in a year out, right?
Yeah.
Spring.
Let's, let's stay on the, on the high. Thank you. I know some are watching. Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Guy.
Just a shout out to um, Muriel and Graham, who were, who joined uh, Mike, Lucas, and I for the district's team. Thank you for your time and commitment to that. And then on behalf of the CCSTA, um, Ashley, the lead negotiator, and the rest of their team for the countless hours that we put into making this happen. So thank you.
Very sensitive. R twenty-nine, be it resolved, resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through M as written. Can I get a motion? Second? Any questions or comments? Got to have comments. Like to welcome. So, uh, we'd like to uh, welcome Lisa in this. Oh, thank you. Lisa.
Rude.
Rude. Not rude. All right. We can uh, go with that. Try not to be rude.
The students never had a hard time.
I was gonna, I wanted to go somewhere with that, but. Excellent. Thank you, and uh, welcome to uh, Chatham. The red statue that Chatham has, uh, Muriel, project plain shirt or actual color?
Scarlet black.
Just so nobody pulls one over on you. I mean, we always uh, have to make sure we, we're clear on this. It's scarlet.
And then, and then someday we'll tell you the story between the Panthers and the Scarleteers, but we're not gonna let that die.
No. All right. Uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Items for future agenda. I know me and Matt were oh, you know what? One of the things we forgot to discuss was this Saturday, it's the thirty-first. Matt will be representing us on the vote. Did anybody have anything to add to NISBA's recommendations or the, do we, does Matt want to stray anywhere or lead us a different path than NISBA?
You know, I, I will say that um, I did not agree with NISBA at all, but in those places where I didn't necessarily agree, I would also say I'm not informed enough. So I'm looking forward to the, the short presentation for the party process.
Yes. All right, well, we'll uh, you brought up uh, the article one. I read back through it and I struggled uh, with what uh,
Hard to understand what some of these are presenting.
Yeah. So um, other than that, you know, I think you'll be in the room. You'll hear a little bit more detailed arguments, and since we nominated you our delegate, we have our space in here to represent Chatham well.
Well, I'll try to keep track of uh, try to keep track of the votes, but I actually don't even know the process yet. They uh, they owe me a training video. We'll see uh, said it was a caucus style.
Yes.
It was in purpose, in, in person, rather? I don't.
I, in person, I've never seen it uh, uh, this way either, so uh, I'd love to have you screenshot or something, capture something for a report for us. For uh, whoever does it next year, too, if it's, you know, whatever. But yeah, it's uh, in the past, it was uh, yea and nay podiums with people lined up behind them. And you had three minutes to s, to speak to a panel of about well, fourteen people. Most of those names you saw on that are representing, and then I think they even have a re, election of maybe three or four seats at the end of that panel.
It's, it's an aggressive um, agenda timeline. Considering the like, two-hour window they said it would all gonna fit in. I don't know how they're gonna get through it all.
That I'm gonna be honest. Uh, I don't know how they're gonna get that done either, because uh, um, I think in person it had been at least four to five hours. So uh, looking forward to hearing all about it.
Okay.
I see Dev writing down. Uh, we'll, we'll follow up and make sure that we uh, know what you need from them, in terms of blocking on this.
Oh, no, uh, uh, Brian, um, at NISBA is getting you the training video.
Okay, okay.
They're just um, eleventh hour on all this stuff, putting together their remote version of this meeting. It's been challenging.
I can imagine. Okay. If you need anything, reach out. We'll, we'll facilitate that.
Hey uh, and board members have any items for future agendas? All right, uh, second public comment. Does anybody in the public have anything? I'm looking for hands.
Oh, we got a hand up. Hang on.
All right.
Hang on, Joe.
Hello, Joe. Uh, I think we, we have.
Yeah, no, she's got, she's got it.
Now you can hear me?
Hang on, one second. Okay.
Now we got her.
Now you got me?
Yep. Hi, Joe.
Um, I just, I just, I'm Jill Chittin, president of the Chatham Teachers Association, and I just wanted to say on behalf of all of our members, thank you so much um, for your continued support, and we um, continue to look forward to working together for what's best for the Chatham students. And especially with this difficult year, we appreciate you recognizing that, and we also really appreciate you approving that contract tonight. So thank you.
Oh, we, we all thank you and all the hard work you guys do. Um, we, we often have extended out, um, you know, uh, to help through this. Do not hesitate to reach out. We're all, we're all in this together.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody have anything they'd like to say to Joe? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. We'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Any other hands?
Wednesday's our, our liaison with the, with the union, so.
There any other hands up?
Nope.
Okay, that, that Lisa Engel didn't have anything to say?
Uh, let me.
I'm just being wise.
Lisa's no longer with us. Now we have Meg, Pat, and Rodney.
Okay. Hey, Rod.
Oh, you're back. Okay. She wants, it says in the chat, Mom, what are you bringing for dinner? No.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I should have asked during superintendent report, uh, but I'm curious. Been a few more weeks here. Do we have numbers firming up or please returning to school, request returning to school? What are we doing on the transportation and everything?
Uh, I checked with Steve today. Transportation is going well. Um, we did, as you remember from the letter that I shared with the board a few weeks ago, uh, this year, we did something just a little different. We had to wait um, to approve those alternate transportation requests. We needed a few weeks of uh, determining the um, patterns of ridership before we could commit to anything other than what we could commit to for the eligible students. Uh, I'm happy to report that um, Dev, those letters did go out or going out.
They went out today.
Letters went out today to all eleven or so families saying that um, in all cases, we're able to honor those requests. Um, there's only one that's gonna be a little bit on the fence. If we get a large number of people back, it may impact that request, but for the most part, we're, we're able to, for the time being, honor all those alternate requests, which is good. With, to your first question, um, I'm gonna look over to the assistant principals. So remember what we've got going on here. Trimesters at MED, so the trimester doesn't end till early December, so parents still have a couple of weeks to indicate their desire to come back or not. I know several have already begun to request in-person. I think that's trended up.
So November sixteenth, they have submitted a so far, we have one opposition request, and we have less than four families that have expressed this, but have not given a
So that, that deadline is a little further away, and you know, we don't know what'll happen to the end, but it's not necessarily a huge thing at this moment. The high school, on the other hand, because they're on the quarter system, that's um, the quarter ends in November thirteenth, and the deadline was, I think, last Friday. Do you have any sense for the numbers on that yet?
Pretty much a wash. Either they're in order of sex either, but it means that five come back. Since that, we also had six families saying that they wanted to go. Uh, along with two other students today, said that they wanted to go remote, so we're about it.
Which is um, good for us in that um, we, you know, we still have a limited capacity in our buildings, and we would have been facing, if, if a large number of people wanted to come back, we would have, we would have some challenges. So right now, if we're at par, that's good news. Two additional comments. One, um, interim reports go out, have gone out, uh, have gone out? Progress reports? So, okay, so what, as we said before, um, we are carefully watching the academic performance of our students, our counselors, our principals, and um, you know, we, I won't say that we don't have concern about several students across the board. And uh, that's where conversations with their, with them and their family, depending on what grade level, in terms of whether we feel remote uh, instruction is working for them, and whether we would recommend that they consider a different modality. So those conversations are going on. I know one student today is um, discussing with a parent, they're gonna come back in-person in the high school because we think that's in a person's best interest. Um, what we're also seeing in a few places in the capital region, you can imagine, uh, we tried to be as flexible as we could with parents by having trimesters at the uh, elementary school and quarters at the high school. Some districts up front did not use the quarter system. They used the semester system, so you had to decide if you were in um, the middle school or high school in many districts. Um, I think your district, Lisa, right? Did, did you do the semester system? They, they had to, they had to commit for the full semester, right?
We're on quarters, but we asked for families to
Right. So several districts had said, if you're going to be full remote, you're gonna be full remote until the end of roughly mid to end of January. We went on the quarter system, which is much more volatile, and what we're seeing is a couple of school districts in the region say this was much more disruptive, or potentially disruptive than we would have expected from a scheduling and a resource um, perspective, and some are saying that we're gonna make, allow parents to make a decision, but whatever decision they make now will have to be for the rest of the year, because we can't go through this again. We're not quite there yet, especially since uh, we're monitoring this closely and we're not seeing a huge shift either way. But I will tell you that we will um, rethink whether we could do this from a practical perspective um, every quarter and every trimester um, going forward. So just something to give the board a heads up on. The middle school would be on the high school schedule, so.
The middle school would be on the high school schedule, so quarter. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, Ben. Mike, any sense, I talked to Mr. Burns and any sense for the directionality of those requests? Three? That are going, that were remote that want to come back? Okay. So again, a little less than we expected. I was really, you know, the COVID cases, although they're on a pretty steep rise in the region, knock on wood, we were one district that fortunately has not had any. And every time I say that, I figure I don't want to jinx myself. But, and I thought, I think we've done a real nice job of our in-person instruction. Remember, we've got K6 coming in Monday through Friday. And I thought more parents would see that we've done a really nice job in terms of our disinfecting and cleaning and our logistics. I thought there would have been a higher interest in coming back, but some ways I'm relieved that that's not the case right now. Hopefully that's helpful.
All right. Other questions or comments out of the table? How about a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.